Can we blame Dave?
Yeah.
Basta.
Why not?
They're waiting for Dave.
Right.
When in doubt?
Right.
Are they coming in from out of town?
Oh no, I hope we don't have that feedback again tonight.
From the one yesterday or?
Yeah, because...
I heard from a couple citizens at the feedback.
Well, I listened in last night and I could hear it.
You can hear it?
Some of the, like you and Dave were complaining about it too, right?
I heard it badly. You didn't hear it?
I hear it right now.
I was seizing you and you said that because it was loud.
Yeah, it was loud. I am not sure.
We're waiting on you member questa.
I figured that was gonna be the case. But I heard that we haven't had our firm arrive yet. We would be stood up quickly.
Wouldn't be the first.
It'll be a long hour and a half wait.
Yeah, no kidding.
We sent in a help sheet today that we'll shoot it, but I don't know what. Got decided, so hopefully this is not...
Maybe the problem doesn't happen in the daytime, only at night.
My company is saving money. They don't have their Christmas party in December, they have it in January.
At first I thought maybe it was...
So the Christmas party is this evening. It does get worn sneakers.
But then it didn't seem to correlate.
Isn't something I should do often?
See how it does.
Thank you.
Still with professional. Professional casual.
Just as long as the camera stays above the desk.
Steve, never heard that before.
Here.
Thank you. They arrived?
Is there anybody con formal?
Yeah, okay.
Dave said he'd do a dance for us while we ate. There you go.
I'm dancing. More vocalist.
He could do karaoke.
I'll even play a few dances.
That would be fun.
That'll be easy.
Tom Brennan's on vacation. Bring your flute?
No, but I'll have it dropped off if Dave will dance.
So maybe it's December 6th.
In the direction.
He dropped it.
No. Sorry, what?
You want me to talk? No, thank you.
Can you yodel?
No.
She's from Minnesota.
Are we on our back? All right. So maybe what I'll do is...
Linda, you're from Minnesota, can you yodel?
Minnesota?
Yodel.
You're from Minnesota.
You're the Sentinel?
Can you skate?
That I can.
Go.
I can, backwards even twirl. Good evening, everyone. This is a city council special meeting Tuesday, January 15th, with the goal of interviewing search firms tonight for our city manager position. And we are waiting for our first firm, the Novak firm, to come. And so you're just seeing us, for those of you watching, we're just waiting. So we will wait until they arrive. Indeed. Hopefully they're still coming.
Are we gonna do this similar to how we interviewed for boards and commissions?
Yes, so I guess we could just go through and make sure that we have... So they're gonna present. The plan that we had was to have them present for 15 to 20 minutes and that was communicated to them. And we did not get a PowerPoint from Novak to post, so you didn't get that ahead of time.
Maybe it'll be the same as what we had before.
I wonder, it could be. So that's why I'm pulling up my other one is to have... Then we have eight, nine council questions. Do you want me, I just assume I'll start like we did last night and move around for the second one. It'll just, it'll, some of us will have more than one. But you can ask follow-up questions too, so there, you know, each firm's gonna be a little different. So I think it's fine to ask follow-up questions. I just wanna make sure that we're really succinct in our asking of questions and let them, you know, answer. And I'd like for us to be done at an hour and 15 minutes for each, so we have a break in between and think. So hopefully we could be done legitimately by 8:45 if we do it right. But we'll definitely be out here at 9:00 and we won't talk about any of them tonight. We'll do it next on Thursday.
And on Thursday we just have one?
Just have one.
Mm-hmm.
So tonight is Novak and then government HR, Gov HR.
So just a question, Novak did not submit a presentation.
They did not. They may be assuming that we'll use our other thing that we got to decide from them or, I don't know. So I have enough juice. But if they don't show up, maybe it's because they never attended to come. Or it's possible there's, it's traffic jam or something. Yep, it is out of time of day.
LSO S and I'll turn this back over.
Are there any other questions or concerns about your questions upon making? Do we get any feedback from someone?
If we have follow-up questions, we'll just ask at the very end. Or TBD. Let's talk about that for a second. Some follow-up questions make more sense right in the time that they're talking about that content area. So I'm fine with you wanna do it that way rather than wait. So if you're the one asking, I'm just gonna watch the clock though and push us along.
Since we at least have more than 10 minutes.
Pardon?
Since we at least have more than 10 minutes, it's a little different scenario than board of commission interviews. So we should at least be able to squeeze in a follow-up right when we're doing it.
And if a different council member has a question, a follow-up question about what we're doing, they can just...
Yes, and if you would just put on your light so I could see you have one.
Okay, that's good to know.
This is exciting actually. The next step, we're gonna get closer.
Yeah. Yeah, a couple of citizens have been asking me where we are in the process. So I was happy to tell them we're interviewing search firms. A final group of search firms, so that's good. We'll get there.
So I'm not sure if we covered this mayor, but if Novak does show up, will we be giving them the full 75 minutes or?
I think let's give ourselves a 10-minute break.
Right.
So they stop when we stop.
Keep on the schedule.
I hope.
I agree.
Yeah, I think so too. Hopefully they show up.
Pardon?
Hopefully they show up.
Mm-hmm.
Whoops.
Amy, you said you went to Natura.
I did.
How long was it?
We spent probably about an hour. Could've stayed longer.
I haven't gone yet, if you wanna go?
It was really cool.
I haven't decided when, I gotta figure it out.
I'm gonna go this week.
It looks cool.
Yeah, I'll definitely go again.
It was sold out, I'm sure.
Really?
Mm-hmm, on the Saturday she went.
Yeah, I went on Saturday and we went to like the 2 o'clock show and they said sold out for that day.
Thought they let you in?
Well, I bought tickets in advance. Yeah.
I see how you are.
Yeah.
Using your status.
Good thing I did, or I wouldn't be S.O.L.
Just drop your name.
No, didn't do that.
You know who I am?
Do you know who I am? Yeah, do you have $20? What? Yeah.
No, not yet.
Can't do that.
Can't do that.
Not a good time to do that.
No, don't do that.
Yeah, I bet Nico would like it.
He'd love it.
It was fun.
Looks cool.
Black lights and everything.
He's gonna like the black light, he may just run off at the black light.
So you can download an app?
I haven't done it yet, but yeah.
The app's pretty cool too. Really?
So then you pick a light to have it pop up. It's virtual reality stuff.
So are you okay with one app or?
Yeah. I think one app's fine. Yeah, it was working fine on Saturday.
You can get new light though.
So cool, I wonder how they made that happen. Like technically.
Hi.
You got rid of your little chair.
I was just, I was just asking about you.
Yeah, that chair was kinda fast. That little chair was very quick.
Yeah. I still use it, I cannot walk long distances.
Can zip around.
I wanted to get a contact number for the people that didn't show up. I was telling Dorothy, the traffic is horrible.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna drive my daughter too late, it's gonna come back to take me an hour.
They have a local person.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know where this person is, so I'm trying to contact them.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, so the App Store, there was an update in iAgenda or whatever. That fixed, that mentioned something about downloading issues.
Okay.
So I'll fetch that probably next day or day before.
Oh, you're kidding, it just came out?
Yeah.
Oh.
So that will probably fix all those PDF issues or whatever.
Lock command loading issues, yep. Okay.
Probably other people complain about that too, that probably fixes that.
Because I did notice it was working better last night during the study session.
You noticed what?
It was working better last night. Right.
Like we should hear the Jeopardy music or something.
No, we don't. Not for another hour. Should we do a mock interview?
Not a bad idea.
I get so ambitious here.
Ask the city clerk to stand in.
Wants to do a mock interview, how do you sit in?
You wanna stand in as the firm? But I'm the one that needs to press.
Hmm?
Can you get a agenda notes on your back?
I've never, I just do it on the iPad. I've never tried it on the Mac. I just do it on the iPad. I think you guys can load it on your MacBook.
I need to do it on Windows, like there's a Windows there.
Really? But no. MacBook? Or if you can put it on a MacBook Pro, you should be able to put it on a MacBook. I mean, a laptop. iPad. You should be able to put it on a MacBook Pro.
It's only closed 'til 6 o'clock tonight, right? Close at 6 or?
What does? I'm not sure, let me see.
It closes early during the week, right?
Oh. Let's see. Eight, baby. Yeah, we could just go do that while we wait. Wait a minute. There's this one room with a movie kind of in there and it's so zen. When I was watching it, I was like, I would be so much happier if I got to like sit in there before or after council meetings. It's so relaxing.
I got a lot of yoga Monday.
So relaxing in there. Tuesday, yeah, 6 o'clock, last admission, 5 p.m. Tuesday, yeah, six o'clock, last admission, five p.m.
Do you have any notes for this one?
Um.
I'll need tape as well.
Oh, yeah.
Left mine in the car. So. Can't do it, um, oh, wait a minute, no, we can't do it there because it's too quick, right?
Right.
Because we need time.
Because, you know, there was a mix itself. Right, okay.
She can even come here, right?
On the, okay, the twenty second. Uh huh.
The second, we've got time because they will be coming until.
Right, February fourth is one.
Well, except that's a week, so they're.
Okay, so, and you know what? It might be obvious, but.
Right, it might be.
And so it won't be that big a deal.
Yeah. All right.
Counsel and public, I just wanted to let you know that we are delayed because the group that was, we thought was coming tonight confirmed for Thursday night. It was a mistake on our end of it, not theirs, I don't want this to reflect on them badly at all. And so they're actually flying in from Bethesda, Maryland, so they will be coming. They're on the phone with them right now. And so we have time from now until the next interview, which is at seven thirty. To, we can talk any further about the questions if you, if you have anything more there. Otherwise, we have a break until then. I was just checking with Mayor Protam just to confirm our date for when this will come before the regular meeting to select and to approve in the chambers is February fourth. Because we don't have enough time to, there'll, there'll be some time to negotiate, can't turn it around that quickly for this coming Monday night. So we already knew that February fourth is the day that we're pushed to for this. We have time for us to still deliberate over the three that will be coming. Mayor Protam just suggested that it may be really obvious after.
If we find out what happened.
All right, let me just finish.
Sorry, sorry.
Go ahead and, go ahead and sit down, so, but that, it will give us enough time. And we could either add a half hour before a meeting, or we, we can shift something else around so we have enough time to decide on the three of them. I don't wanna, I don't wanna short chain our decision-making process, so, but that's the alert at this point. Do you wanna fill us in on?
Is there a possibility that we can have the other interview earlier?
I called the seven thirty interview and left a message with the representative and asked for them to come sooner.
Thank you.
Right, go follow up with the text as well.
So what happened is the lady that was supposed to be here at six, she was scheduled for six, and then she left a voicemail saying that she couldn't come on today. So she was also scheduled for Thursday, but the person that was making the booking didn't advert, uh, counsel of the change on the schedule. So she's already scheduled to be here on Thursday at seven thirty.
Oh, okay.
Seven or seven thirty, yeah.
Hopefully at seven thirty, because right now we have a group at six.
Yeah, so, uh, we have two people scheduled already for Thursday, two firms already scheduled for Thursday.
We only have one until now, now we have two, right?
Yeah, and the, as Dorothy said, the other lady, she called her and left a message to see if she can come in earlier than scheduled time.
Thank you.
We apologize.
Yep.
She.
Well, I'm glad we have a little flexibility.
Right.
If we had, had two coming on Thursday, would not have worked out very well.
Right.
Any, any questions from any of you? Seems like we can take a bit of a formal break and turn off your mics and go get coffee if you want, or whatever you'd like. So for the public, we will be back on at seven thirty, unless, well, unless we find out it's earlier. So maybe we just stay tuned for a little while longer. Yeah. So, interim city manager Hargrove, did you, you left a message for the second group to come earlier? But you haven't, yeah, you haven't heard back yet. So I wonder if we oughta wait about ten minutes for the public in case people are sitting and waiting, and then turn everything off so we can keep them alerted to it? So it's kind of a standby, do you have some nice music?
Uh, no, it's not me.
I thought member Questa was gonna dance.
I think member Wink needs to tell her husband to bring her flute.
Of course, he'll dance, I'll play.
I'm singing.
Okay, we could do that too.
Sounds like we're forming a band.
Mm-hmm.
What do you play?
Triangle.
Oh, that'll work. That'll go well.
There you go.
We could tell jokes, but that's not on your agenda either, right? No. Mine aren't permissible in this space.
I've got a four and seven year old, so I have plenty.
Dad jokes?
Oh, good.
Yes, you can do it on your iPhone, because it's, it's an app.
Okay.
I don't, yeah, they come in pretty tiny.
Yeah.
This is from my cousin.
Where does, where does this person live? That's pretty brilliant.
She lives in Nebraska.
That's hilarious.
But she is, she's the youngest of all the cousins, I'm the oldest of all the cousins, so she could be about that age.
That's very true, that's really funny.
I only do Facebook when I'm sitting in the doctor's office. And so.
That's probably optimal use of Facebook, you're probably one of the few people in the world that uses it appropriately. I wake up and I'm like.
Oh, yeah, but see, I think, I think you're in that age group because my niece is, and she says, yeah, Rita, if you wanna communicate with our age group, you gotta do Facebook.
No. Yeah. I, I tried and not go on it. I'm not on it right now.
I actually.
It's like trying not to.
I do, and probably it's only once every few weeks that I do it, or I don't post, I just look, but I check on my family.
Yeah. That's funny. This is Andrea, working with her little baby.
Mm-hmm.
You know that?
He's a cutie.
Oh, he's so cute. Happy for her.
Uh huh. Happy that he's doing so well.
Yeah, after the oxygen and. I mean, you have a dinner in there.
Thank you. Plenty of time to eat it.
Have time now.
Can't really talk about anything else, right, cause nothing else is on there.
Just on this, that's all you can talk about.
Dinner?
Anything not involved with anything other than the city, certainly.
Let's say council dinner will be served at seven thirty, so we can talk about that. Hey, I thought I'd give you a quick call, cause we're on a standstill. People, some didn't call, we've got an hour break, hour now. But I wanted to let you know how wonderful today was.
Is this working? Hello?
There was a, there was a pesto dish there, and then there was a. Did it say yak sauce?
Well, that's what it says, right?
It says yak.
Yak sauce. Yakitori. See, that's what I thought too, but yakitori. Yakitori.
But yakitori is.
Yakitori, cause there're noodles in it, I think. No, it's for noodles, dude.
Uh, no, I think I remember seeing someone with that in there.
No.
Well, I'm, I'm Googling it.
There's that place that always serves yakitori on the. It's on Colorado, and it's down on Spear and Eighth.
The green dragon's also on Eighth.
Um.
I've never had that.
You know what place it's, everybody goes there, um. On Colorado? Yeah, it's that, they have noodles and. And they, they, everything has yakitori, but their yakitori's really in noodles.
Hokkien Joe's? Wait, no.
No, it's kinda like that, it's everywhere, and it's been on Colorado, I mean, since I came here and went to DU, everybody goes there, so. It's not expensive.
Oh, what street is it on?
It's right on Colorado, it's right by Dairy Queen, um.
Well, we're on Colorado.
South of, south of Evans. Yes.
Wait, which one?
Dairy Queen.
Oh, yes, that place is good.
They put yakitori out in noodles.
That place is good.
So, yeah.
They've been around forever.
Good job. Good job.
That's probably good.
Oh, we're just talking about yakitori.
The public shouldn't hear you chew. No, but yakitori is the chicken skewer. It's not a sauce. Okay.
Glad we have something to talk about.
I'm about to get upset.
Just so you know.
What are you hitting on to?
Oh, no. So quickly, you didn't even know what I was gonna ask for. I would've given you mine.
Whatever. I don't, I don't fault for that one. I don't fault for that one.
Here you are, here you go. Are they down there? Are Rita and Rita down there?
Can you bring them in?
Okay.
Is this like a joke or something?
I don't know what you're doing.
Why don't you? Huh?
Council, we haven't heard back from the other agency yet, so I think it'd be smarter not to just sit here and wait around and figure it out. Let's just plan that 7:15, we'll meet back here if that, that would be the reasonable time a group would come to get here early and set up. And if they're here and ready to go, we'll just start. Our inner city manager thought that they've, we have not, she's not been able to make any contact with them, so I think that's the best option. So if you want to go get a cup of coffee or anything, certainly could check back at seven if they were here, but it's unlikely. So for now, at least, I think we'll suspend until, until then, right? Any issues or concerns other than, sorry, this is a waste of our time? Thanks.
Give you all a card.
Thanks for being early.
Yeah, how about that?
But my parents were there with her, so I'm going to be early.
Oh, very nice to meet you. Should have gotten up and left early. No, you are a wonderful person.
Get her going then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Guess that guy's feelings that you wouldn't come back. Guess she won't believe me. Oh, we couldn't hear him. Sounded like he was... I mean, I'm sure you're just... Were you down there? Have Cora Bernton, were you down there?
I wasn't the one yelling.
No, I was wondering if you were down there with him.
We record and videotape everything, so speaking directly to this firm like that.
Make it clearer, sure.
Okay, we've got four things up there.
Oh.
I don't think we should have one yelling at any time.
No, I was just wondering if he was here, you were hearing the whole thing. It's a big joke, I know. Big joke on us. Oh, well. We were, oh, yeah, we were almost all the way over to Nixon, so we didn't know why he was yelling. It's like, what? And he couldn't, he couldn't yell very loud. I, I wouldn't either, so it was good that Amy called, but it's a better way to do it. We had a nice... Oh, no, 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 we made quite our, we were on the other side of the circle. We had to get over there before we could back. Yeah, it's hard for me.
Also my sense of humor.
Oh, was Nathaniel here when you found out? He is here.
All right, council. We're assembled and ready to hear from our second, actually, our first firm tonight now that we're back here. And we have everyone back in order. And the Gov HR, we have, it's Heidi, right?
Heidi Voorhees.
Voorhees, okay. Who's with us, who happened to come in a little early so she could make sure she's at the right place. And that was fortuitous for us because we are, we are ready to roll. So our plan was to give you 15 minutes or so, give or take, to do some presenting to us. And then we have a set of about eight, nine questions. And along the way, we may ask some follow-ups with them. And we will go around as we ask those questions. But why don't we introduce ourselves so you know who all is in the room? I know you've shaken hands again, but maybe tell what district you're in. And, yeah, start with you, council member Sierra.
Well, Nathaniel Sierra, District One here in Inglewood. Great to meet you.
Laura Bernton, District Three.
And I'm Linda Olson, it's District Two, and Mayor.
Cheryl Winken, Amman at Large Member.
Dave Questa, District Four.
Amy Martinez, At Large. Welcome to meet me.
Thank you. We have these interesting little things where we push our lights on, so I can tell who's asking. But we'll, you know, probably be a little bit informal, but I want to make sure we keep on track. Absolutely. So I think, given the time we have, we'll probably go till about maybe 8:15 or so. Whatever you need. And if we finish early, that's fine too, but appreciate the time with us.
Yeah, I did watch one of your council meetings, so I saw your, your, your lights. I thought that was really interesting.
Thank you. Go ahead and begin.
Well, as you know, I'm Heidi Voorhees. I'm the president and co-owner of Gov HR USA. And the co-owner is Joellen Katamatori. So the two of us together own the business. We're located in the suburbs of Chicago, Northbrook, Illinois. So we're very central, we can get almost anywhere in the country pretty easily. Our business has been in place since 2009. I founded it at that point, and then Joellen joined me in 2011. We have 12 full-time employees, five part-time employees, and then another 25 project consultants that work on an as-needed basis. We are solely focused on recruitment and selection and management consulting in the local government public sector. So we work with cities and counties on a wide variety of, of projects, including executive recruitment, compensation studies, management consulting, organization studies, those kinds of things. We also have a temporary staffing business, GovTemp's USA, where we assist local governments with interim and contract staffing. So that's been also a second business that the two of us own. So that's really our two businesses. My background is in local government management. I have an MPA, a master's in public administration. And I started my career in Kansas City, Missouri, and then made my way back to the Chicago suburbs. I grew up in Rockford, Illinois, so I always wanted to get back to the Chicago area. And spent, ended up spending 15 years in Willmett, Illinois, which, where I was the manager for 10 years. And it's very similar in size and square miles to Englewood. Our, our population in Willmett is 26,000 over 5.3 square miles. So some, that's, you know, that's just a statistical similarity. One thing I know is that every community is different and has its own culture and history and style. So that doesn't necessarily mean anything other than, you know, I understand sort of the scope of your operations. So I did that for 10 years. I was the city manager, working there. And then decided I wanted to get into recruitment and selection, and that's when I started the business. So we work all over the country, California to New England, Florida, and of course, the Midwest. You'll notice that we do have quite a few recruitments that are in the Midwest. But we're very comfortable working in almost any location. So with that, I'll just get into a little bit of our philosophy.
Just tell you one thing, these things are really, these little green lighted, yeah. They pick up for other seekers. So just pull a little bit closer. Sometimes when you turn your head, yeah, that'll be great, thank you.
Okay. We really, our approach is to partner with our clients. So we believe in a partnership that's based on transparency, mutual respect, cooperation. For example, we have, we believe that if you want to see all of the resumes at any point in the process, we are comfortable with that. We, we partner with our clients regularly in that area. We also, we're experienced. I've probably done more than 250 different executive recruitments, different processes. So we're, I can adapt to whatever approach you would all like to take. And if you want suggestions, I can give you different suggestions of different styles and approaches to recruitment and selection. We do have a process that I'll walk you through quickly. But we do feel that working closely together, being honest about the, what you are looking for in a candidate, and then I am in turn very transparent and honest with you about the capabilities and backgrounds of the candidates that we present to you. And we feel like that is the best way to have a successful process. As I mentioned, we're your partner throughout the process. We believe in developing a calendar and sticking to it. So we do have a 90-day calendar. We say that 90 days from the time you sign the contract, you'll be ready to appoint. That's provided we can all get all of the dates on everyone's calendars. But we are, we, we do that and we do it regularly, so we can make sure that we meet that timeline. And we will give you, and I say we, I am the only person you would ever see. But we do have a team. I work closely with a recruitment coordinator, a reference specialist. And in our firm, we view every recruitment as something that we all will be aware of. So we may have a recruiter in Florida who knows some, you know, knows about a candidate. So it's, it's a, it's a team approach. But again, I would be the only person, if we were selected, that you would ever see. As mentioned, our experience is nationwide. Our headquarters is in Northbrook, but we have consultants in Arizona, we have consultants based here in Colorado, we have, you know, people in Wisconsin, and in Florida, and also in Michigan. We have worked in 32 different states since 2009. And I think this particular statistic is important. 28% of our clients are repeat customers. And of that, 46% have, of that 28%, almost half have done more than two recruitment processes for us, which we believe is a testament to their satisfaction. There's nothing like being hired back to let you know that you, that the work you did was appreciated and well-done. Just a small sample of the recruitments that I've done for communities. I tried to find communities that were similar in population to Englewood. You know, I've worked in Cheshire, Connecticut. I'm currently working with Burleson, Texas for a second time. I, their manager that they hired in 2011 is retiring. So they asked me to come back and work with them again. Just finished Decatur, Georgia, which is a suburb of Atlanta. Lake Forest, Illinois, which is a northern suburb of Chicago. Beloit, Wisconsin, which is also a very similarly sized community. And Ferguson, Missouri, which is slightly smaller. So we've had, you know, I've had personally a lot of experience with different sized communities, but this is kind of the, the sweet spot population-wise. That's a little bit about me. I am very active in professional associations. Our firm is very active in professional associations. We think that that's important in order to be aware of candidates that are available. We regularly attend conferences, state conferences, national conferences. We support and are active with different organizations through, that are affiliates of the International City and County Management Association. Those include the Local Government Hispanic Network, the International, the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, and then the League of Women in Government. So we, we work very closely and not only give our time, but give financial support to these organizations. I think the most important thing about our process is our immersion in the beginning. If selected, I would come back and spend a couple of days here in Englewood, meeting with each of you individually, meeting with the senior staff members individually, and any other stakeholders that you think it's important that I meet with. And we've done stakeholder meetings that have taken a wide variety of formats, from open meetings where you invite the public to come in, to surveys, we've done surveys. I recently, last May, coordinated the public engagement process for the police chief recruitment, or selection. It wasn't a recruitment, it was a selection in Austin, Texas. They wanted to appoint the interim chief as chief, they thought, and asked me to come and facilitate their public engagement process, which was multifaceted. Everything from interviews on the local PBS station to focus groups, emails, surveys, utilization of a 311 center. So whatever approach you would like to take with stakeholder groups, I can give you a lot of suggestions in how to do that. All of that leads to the development of a detailed recruitment brochure, which was a part of our packet that you all saw. And that, all the information that's taken and is distilled down into that recruitment brochure. And that really becomes sort of the guidepost for the recruitment. It's on, we typically wouldn't print it. It's, it's emailed out to potential candidates. If there were a conference coming up that we were attending, we might print it then and take it along. But usually, the PDF version is the way to go. And then it's emailed, we have databases that we pay to belong to that give us the email addresses for city managers all across the country. So I can say, you know, I want, I want to send this brochure to every city manager in the country that's in a city between 25 and 100,000, for example. Or I can parse it even further to just the west, or just the southwest. So that's, because we believe in outreach, and I'll get to that in a minute. But I think it's important that you do it in a variety of ways. You do the traditional outreach where you put things on webs, you put the announcement on websites. You do the outreach where you call people and say, I think you would be great for this position. But then I also think it's important to do an email blast to candidates that we may not know about, and make sure that they're aware of this opportunity. And finally, we make heavy use of social media. We really believe strongly in using LinkedIn, in using Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, all of those to get the word out. One of the other organizations that we're active in is the early local government leaders. They also, they have a phenomenal social media presence and are great at getting the word out. So those, that helps with the outreach, and the brochure is always a link to whatever we're doing. And in addition, we have about 5,000 visitors per month to our website. So we have, we operate a jobs board, and we, people can sign up to get alerts on any job that they want. And we have a lot of folks that do that, even people who are happily employed. They just want to keep up on what's going on out there. We also know that we are your representative. And we want to make sure that anyone who participates in this process comes away feeling that the Englewood process was a fair and responsive one. So as soon, we have an electronic application system. It's not complicated, but as soon as you apply, you get an acknowledgement. So you know that your materials have been received. And then at the conclu, at the conclusion of the process, we send a letter out to everyone who applied and say, this is who, thank you for your application. This is who applied, this is a little bit of their background. So the loop is closed. And we receive a lot of compliments on that. A lot of people feel they apply for jobs and they never hear what happened. In the meantime, of course, there's a group of 20 to 25 we may be working with. Those folks get phone calls and, and singular emails that keep them apprised of the process. But there will be, you'll see, whomever you hire, there will be a number of people who apply that really aren't even remotely qualified. So you don't really engage with them. But they do get the courtesy of, of a response at the end. So once we've gone through that application process, there's a, I personally look at every resume and read every resume. It isn't, we don't do keyword searches on resumes. We look at, I look at, I personally look at every single one and determine whether or not the individuals are someone that I want to talk with further. So for recruitment like this, probably get 50 or 60 resumes, and I may talk to 20 people. I do a video interview with those candidates. So I'm doing, it's either Skype or FaceTime or Zoom, whatever we can make work. So I have an opportunity to not only understand their background, but also have a sense of their, how articulate they are, their energy level, all of those things that often are a piece of, of somebody's candidacy. We do background inquiries, we do reference calls, all before candidates are presented to you. So I will, we will have done at least two reference calls, we would have done media searches, and have a good idea of that person's background before I come back and present candidates to you. And that would be about 60 days after the contract is signed. I'll be back with you... And that would be about 60 days after the contract is signed. I'll be back with you. You'll get a report in advance and you'll be, you know, give you a chance to review the resumes and cover letters and information. And we have a sample report, I think, that we sent, sent you in the proposal. And then I'll come back and tell you what else I know about those candidates. So I'll, you know, give you further background. And usually the questions that I ask them are based on the recruitment brochure from the beginning. So if you told me that land use planning was important, that's something I would probe with each candidate and give you more information on how they answered that question. There's also the option, we've utilized a, a system called Spark Hire. So if there were two or three questions that you wanted to see each candidate answer, then we can make that happen and provide those videos to you as a part of that process, if that is something that you wanted to do. Then I would work with you. You, it's your role to select the candidates to interview. I will facilitate that process and help you reach consensus. Usually five or six people are selected for the interview. And then we set up all of the logistics. We communicate with the candidates. We make sure that they have the schedule, that they get here on time. We continue to do additional background inquiries on them. At that point, we do the, the motor vehicle, educational verification, all of that on each of the candidates. And also, I will prepare interview questions specifically for this recruitment and provide them to you in advance, their draft. You can decide if you want to use them, if you want to edit them, if you want to add different ones. That's fine. It just gives you something to work off of and to react to. And we will then finalize the interview questions and have an evaluation sheet that you can use to evaluate each of the candidates that you interview. Again, there's, there's all kinds of ways that clients want to do interviewing processes. Some have this group doing all of it. Some have a search committee. Some have citizen panels, employee panels. I have worked with all of those different approaches and, and have worked with citizen panels, worked with employee panels, facilitated those, provided that feedback back to the council so that they can incorporate that into their decision-making process. And we're also here to assist you in the negotiation of a contract as much or as little as you need or want that assistance. As I said in the beginning, it's a partnership with all of you. I think that we are well-respected for our thoroughness, our approach, our network. We have a strong commitment to diversity and to women and, and equity in our profession. We work hard at communicating with all of you to let you know what's going on. As I said, you can have access at any point in time to the resumes. We just have to talk about confidentiality of the candidate's identity. But if, you know, if you want to, you want them in a Dropbox or however you want to do that, we will make that happen. And we are very committed to the profession of local government management and ensuring that the people that we bring to you are highly qualified, can meet the, the challenges and goals that you've set. I've looked at your strategic plan, your goal setting. You've really done some amazing work, your priority-based budgeting process. All of these things, I think, would be very appealing to candidates. It really shows a progressive approach to local government. And I think it gives people a lot of information about how you like to conduct business. We do have a guarantee that if the selected candidate does, leaves for any reason within the first two years, you all decide that they're not the right fit, they don't stay for whatever reason. It doesn't happen that often, but it does happen. I, I come back. We redo the recruitment. There's no extra fee. The only additional charge is the, is any expenses for advertising and the consultant travel. But other than that, all of, the fee is waived and we'll do it again. So I think that that, I think our breadth of experience is, is a very positive aspect of our process. And I think that we have a great reputation and would love to work with you. So at that, I'll stop and be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Great presentation. I'll let Mayor Protam pick us off at their first question, if you don't mind.
Good to have you here, Ms. Lee.
Thank you.
The first question is, what processes will you use?
Mayor Protam, can you turn your sound on? Sorry.
That's all right. You can't hear it when you...
Okay. What processes will you use to understand the challenges and opportunities facing the Englewood community while assessing the varied priorities of citizens, council members, and staff?
Well, it's a, I'd say it's multifaceted. I've already started. I've read a little bit about, about Englewood. I've read some of the documents online. And probably a deeper dive into those documents is one aspect. The other is visiting with each of you individually and as a group to understand what your priorities and challenges are. And also, if you would permit it, I would love to meet individually with each of the department heads to also get their perspective on the community and the challenges. And usually there's not much difference, but it's just good to hear it from different perspectives. And then any stakeholder groups that you want me to talk with. Sometimes it's the Chamber of Commerce. Sometimes, I know you have a strong arts community. Sometimes it's that group. It really varies depending on the community and, and the groups that you think might be interested in talking with me. So it's, it's both document review and then personal conversation. I may look at a couple more board meetings, but I, you know, those would be the, that would be the kind of research that I would do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink.
Ms. Heidi, would you kindly describe your understanding of the strategic, operational, and financial importance of this Englewood city manager position?
Well, I just done, based on my limited research on the, on the city, I know that you do have a heavy reliance on sales tax. So I know that that's always going, that's always a challenge. At least it's a challenge for most of the other communities that I work with that have that because it's cyclical. And we all know the hit that we're taking from internet sales and that sort of thing. So I know that, but it does look like you have a very healthy budget. You have a healthy fund balance. I noted that you are embarking on a police department headquarters project. So I imagine that keeping that on time and on budget will be an important priority of whomever is the, if, is, may under, be underway. I'm not sure.
We, we might actually have it open before this person comes.
Oh, great. Okay.
But there'll certainly be ongoing things.
Yes, there's always a checklist of things that need to be finished. But that's great. So I guess that was 2017. Yeah, that's, it's been, has been that time. So I think just, you know, I noticed that you, you have a, a part on your website devoted to new business and economic development and planning. And then the population hasn't changed much in the last 10 years, but, you know, it does seem like commercial activity is important. And I think just utilities, I know that that's something that you all have. And then I will tell you that in most communities that we work with, I don't know if it's the case here, but succession planning is very important as key positions are, you know, folks get to that point where they can retire. It makes it more and more important to think about that. And I will tell you that utilities and public works are some of the most difficult positions to fill. And, and the others are not far behind. But you, I know you have a wastewater treatment plant and you have, you know, you have a sizable investment in utilities. So that, just kind of looking forward at what's going on in your organization, I think will also be something that the next city manager would be responsible for. And I think you're probably no different than most of the communities we work with. Everyone wants to look at being as efficient as possible and have a focus on customer service. We, it's a customer service, as I always have said, it's a journey. You know, you're always trying to stay where you are and get, get better if at all possible. So I would imagine those would be very similar things here, but there may be others more nuanced to Englewood.
Thank you, Ms. Warhees.
Good evening, Ms. Warhees, and thank you for the presentation. The third question is to describe the steps you will take to recruit the most qualified candidates for this position.
Okay. First, we would finalize the position announcement and the recruitment brochure. We can actually get the position announcement out while we're finishing, putting the finishing touches on the recruitment brochure. But I would, we would put that on probably 12 or so websites. You know, there, there are obviously the state websites that deal with city managers, the international ones, but also there's a whole bunch of others that attract local government candidates. But, and then LinkedIn and some of the social media sites, we would also make heavy use of. So we'd have that sort of web-based push. Then there would be the email blasts that I mentioned, where we have the database of potential candidates. And then there's good old-fashioned calling people and talking with them about the opportunity and touching base with the folks that we know here in Colorado to see if there's, you know, if they know of any candidates that they think might be good for Englewood in what you're looking for. It isn't, I would say, absolutely a national recruitment. I know a lot of folks like to have people from the same state because they can hit the ground running on the unique aspects of your state. But what you might pick up is someone who wants to come home, someone who maybe started their career here, maybe they went to a different state and then they want to come back. And we've seen that more and more happen. It happens with a fair amount of frequency. So it would be, it would be outreach through the web. It would be personal contact. It would be email contact and then sort of filtering out through our, the folks that we know in the profession that might have some ideas on candidates.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. My question is, describe in detail your recommended process for selecting an interviewing finalist. I have a two-part question.
Okay.
So the process for selecting an interviewing finalist. And then at what points in the search process will you seek guidance or feedback from council and staff?
Sure. Well, I'll start with the last part first. I think, I would absolutely in the beginning. And then if there's any questions that come up that I really can't answer, and it depends on what that might be, I would touch base with you or with the staff to make sure that I have the right answer to that. Sometimes there's very specific questions that somebody has about a, a union contract or something like that. And I would, would, you know, seek your guidance on that. And then if, I don't know if anything were to, if there were any issues that popped up during the recruitment, you never know in local government, you know, never know what's around the corner. So that would be, might be something that I would check in with you and see. Sometimes things that are in the newspaper aren't as, as big of a deal as it seems. But sometimes there's something else going on that is and that isn't apparent. So I would want to be sure I'm keeping my finger on the pulse of any issues that are going on here. And that would mean, you know, we'd want to keep open lines of communication. And then probably if there, as we got toward the end, sometimes there's candidates that have unique backgrounds or qualifications. I've checked in with clients and sometimes they want more money than you're willing to pay. And I've sometimes checked in with clients on that. Or I've told the candidate, you know, let's, I'll move you forward to that first step. But, and we always know what the compensation expectations are. That's part of the process. We ask, so there's no surprises at the end. So I might come to you at that first meeting with the recommended candidates and say, this person, I think is really great, but they want this amount of money. And then you all have that information and can make that decision on whether or not you want to consider that or not. As far as the interviewing process, I really am comfortable with almost any process that, that you are comfortable with. But I do think a couple of things are very important. I think it's important that the candidates interview with you as a group. Sometimes folks want to do it individually, or there's a subset of the council, which can be fine for the first round, but I really think they need to see you all as a group and get a chance to interact with all of you. So I think that's important. I think a two-interview process is also important, where you, maybe you interview six and you narrow it down and then interview a final two or three, because that second interview is often very different. And, and it gets you, I think, as much time as you can spend with that candidate is very positive. Some, some councils want to do a meet and greet among themselves or open it up to staff. And some want to do it with the community, which is, can be great. I think we have to figure out how to capture the community feedback. And we've done that a lot of different ways. If you did want to do something like that, we've done everything from, what's more typical is comment cards that people can fill out and leave, leave behind. I do think it's important that you always make it clear that it's ultimately your decision and you're going to take all of this information into account. Because there are people who might do really well at the community outreach, or they might do really well if you decide to have a department head panel. But really, you're pulling all of that information together and making a decision on who you think is, is right for Englewood at this point in the city's history. So I think the only things I'm really wedded to is all of you interviewing as a group. And I do think you have to ask the same questions of the candidates, at least in that first round. And then in the second round, you can do a deeper dive into areas that you might have more specific questions with. And I'll be happy to, and I'm always here taking notes. If I notice that there's a candidate that might be light in a particular area, then, and moves to the second round, I'll make sure that we focus on that. So those would be the things I feel strongly about. After that, I'm happy to work with you on what you'd like to do.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sierra.
Thank you. What are the qualifications and experience of the project manager who will be handling Englewood's search? How can we be assured that this project manager will prioritize our search and provide direct, consistent, and hands-on management of the process?
Well, the project manager's me. As I said, I'm the only person that you would ever see. And it is, I, as I said, I think I've done this about 250 times. So I have a lot of experience working with, with city councils. I've been a city manager, so I have worked very closely with, with elected officials in my profession. And I will keep you, we'll, we'll put together a calendar and we'll all agree on it. And you'll know what you're going to receive from me on what date. And I will keep that calendar. I promise you that. And then, and keep you advised all along the way. Sometimes we set up a, you know, there's a weekly email. Every Friday, I'll email you and say, these are the, the number of resumes that we have. You know, it's really up to whatever you all decide that you want. But that's something that we will determine so that there's no misunderstanding or failure to provide you with the information that you need in the way that you want. And that's not to say it can't change. You can decide, you know, Heidi, we want to put you in, we want to call you when we're all, when we're having a meeting and check in on something. That's absolutely fine. I will, I will make that a priority. And I think if you talk to our references, the folks that I've worked for, they, everyone has my cell phone number. My office phone rings down to my cell phone number. I'm, I'm almost always available. So that's, that, it's not a problem to get ahold of me.
Thank you.
Could I ask a follow-up to that?
Sure.
We've heard a lot about you, which is great. And it's great to meet the person who's doing it. So we're glad that that's happening. Tell us a little bit about your other staff that you said, you work as a team. They all keep eyes on this. What are some of the expertise that they bring to this?
Well, we have, we have full-time recruitment coordinators. So they handle a lot of the admin work such, and it would, there would be one assigned to this recruitment. So all of the placement of the announcements, interacting with the candidates, monitoring the software, the candidates that are coming in, helping with their due diligence, getting their paperwork pulled together. The summary that you see in the, in the book that we sent you, that's prepared by the recruitment coordinator. So if a candidate isn't clear about their college degree, she would be calling them and saying, you know, can you, can you tell me more about this? Or it's not clear what year you graduated, or whatever the issue might be. So there's that person. Also on the team would be a reference specialist, somebody who is trained to, in human resources to contact references on, you know, on behalf of our firm. That's what they, what she would do. And then we have, you know, we have other recruiters, just like me, who are working on other recruitment. So they, but everyone who does the actual recruiting in our firm has been a local government management official. So we have former city managers. We have former county managers. We have former police chiefs and fire chiefs. So we have a breadth of talent and people that we can call upon for background information, public works directors. Those are all the different folks that work in our firm. We also have two attorneys on staff. One is a former city attorney. So he's always available for different, you know, issues that might come up. And our compliance officer is also an attorney.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Berentone.
This may be a little redundant to the previous one, but just to hone in a little bit more on what is your current workload and availability and describe in detail your projected timeline.
Sure. I'm current, I'm finishing up in Burleson. I'm currently, I'm finishing up in Burleson, and I'm also working with the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and we're about to do the interviews for that position. So I have two or three of the recruitments that I've been working with are finishing up, and I've probably got three or four that I'm working on moving forward. So it's not, not a difficult workload. So I manage, I'm, I'm very careful about managing that and don't, we don't sign on for proposals if we, we can't manage the workload.
Thank you. I would like to follow up with that, too. You, and you chose this one. I mean, you could, you're the person who could decide who does what, right?
True, I do.
So what made you, what made you choose this one as, to put on your workload?
Well, I think I, I'm always attracted to communities of this size, maybe because that's where I worked, you know, and I always have found that interesting. And we actually, my husband and I had vacationed out here in Denver in September, so was sort of not long after that that the proposal came through. And so I just thought, oh, but, you know, it's a good-sized community, I kind of get that, it's my sweet spot, and it just seemed like something I was interested in. But you're right, I do get to choose. That's, that's, that's the fun of being one of the co-owners.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Mayor Olson.
Great. So I'll, do I, yeah, sorry. Councilmember Wink has a question to follow up?
Thank you. Ms. Voorhees, to what extent do you serve as the principal on the projects? Are you always the only person with whom?
Always. Always. Yeah. If for some reason I am not able to be here, it will be a serious issue.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So my, my question is to describe a search that didn't end quite as well. Hopefully, it sounds like you don't have very many of those, but we all do have those in our lives.
Sure.
But what did you learn from that search that you do differently now or that's informed the way that you work? What instructions and support do you give clients to avoid the same kinds of things?
Yeah. I, yeah, one in particular for me, and I probably would have been, I didn't, I was not convinced that the candidate was a good match. The mayor, who actually was the appointing authority, and this is a different state, was very enamored with the candidate. The rest of the board wasn't as much. And I knew the candidate pretty well, and that's why I was not sure it was going to be a fit. And I, I really tried to bring that up. And I, as I look back, I, I don't know if trying harder would have made a difference if they, because they, the mayor was very much, very far down the path. And, and I had set up a call with the mayor and the mayor of the former, of the manager's current place. So, you know, I knew that there'd been a lot of conversations and due diligence, but after a year, it was not a fit. So the, it did not work out. That doesn't happen very, this is the first one that had happened to me in a really long time. I think the only other probably difficult recruitment I've had from time to time is it, just finding qualified candidates for communities that are really struggling. And I was working with a community out in the Northeast that, you know, had been a distressed community by their state definition, had a lot of challenges. And what I always encourage clients to do, and it worked in this case, we did not have, we, I think we had two actual city managers apply, which is really unusual. But we looked at people who had different backgrounds and we ended up, and we've seen this happen in a few places with a candidate who had a military background in base, base command work, which is like a small city. And this person had also been a local elected official in a nearby town. And in this state, that meant a lot of, this person was very involved in budget development and contract negotiations. So that whole combination of experience, you know, I thought, well, let's, let's talk with him and see if it'll work. And he's, it did work, and he is the, the city manager there. So I think never giving up, that's what I always tell clients. I want you to be happy and excited about your next city manager. And if we get to the end of that interview process and you say, you know what, we don't like anybody, or none of them are, are a fit for us, we're going to, I'm going to go back and find additional candidates and make sure that it's something that you all can concur with. And I've, you know, I had a, it happened to me years ago in Wisconsin where the council was completely split. Half of them liked this person, half of them liked this person, and neither side was going to change. And so I said, well, let me go see if I can find candidates that you all will like. And we went back and did, and believe it or not, it was somebody from Arizona who moved to Wisconsin. Hockey, hockey was important.
Hockey.
Who knew? But I think it's just, I think just sticking with the process, making sure that, you know, that you're excited about who you have at the end.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Portem.
What services can the city expect after the completion of the search and what is your guarantee policy?
Yeah, guarantee is two years for any reason. And, and it doesn't happen very often, but it does happen, and we will absolutely come back and make it right. As far as, oh, the first, what was the first question?
What services can the city expect after the completion?
Oh, post, sure. We do have an option to come back and do a 360 review after that, if that's something that you would like. We have, we have staff members and recruiters that do strategic planning and goal setting, though my guess is, given the, what you all have prepared, you have folks that do that. So, yeah, we can absolutely come back and do a review or tune-up of some sort after that. That is definitely something, we can give you a cost on that. It would not be very expensive, maybe six months into the process, after, or six months into the person's employment.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez, I think, has a follow-up with that.
I do. I just, can you tell us a little bit more about what something like that might entail, the post-360 review? Is it, what, what does that look like?
Well, it would involve getting feedback from each of you, feedback from the staff, and feedback from any other key stakeholders that this person may interact with, and then feedback from the, from the person, from the manager, to make sure that we understand everything that's going on. So it's really a full 360 review of that person. And it would identify, and I've done a number of, I haven't done, we haven't done a lot of the 360 reviews, though we are doing one right now, but I have done a number of performance evaluation processes with, with groups and gone through that, and then sort of talked about where the sticking points are, or maybe the communication. It's often right, it often centers on communication. And I'm happy to say that in the one case where the person was kind of, things were not going well, things got back on track. So I think that's, that's the way it would work, would be giving everybody a chance to provide feedback and then really looking at all the data and seeing where the pain points are, where, where things are going well, where there needs to be improvement.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's our last one, and then we'll, we'll have time for you to ask questions.
Sure.
Ms. Voorhees, our last formally scheduled question for you, and perhaps an opportunity for you to recap a lot of what you've said already, is why should we trust you to be a credible ambassador for the city of Englewood?
Well, I love local government, and it's been my career, you know, since, right after college. I've never wavered from it. I've never, it's my passion, and it's something that I care deeply about. I care about the people that are in it. I would never want to see somebody who has challenged ethics be a candidate, and we have definitely walked away from those folks. So I think it's important to me that, that all levels of government, but the only one I interact with is local, conduct themselves in a professional, ethical manner. So I think that's, you know, it's, it's something that I've just done my whole career and worked at. So that's, I guess that's the best thing I can give you as far as how to trust moving forward. I don't have any plans to abandon that at this point. And obviously, it's our firm's reputation, and we care a lot about making sure that you all are happy and that the candidate pool that you have is, gives you selection and choice and, and diversity and all of the things that, that the city deserves.
Thank you. Our Mayor Portem.
Can I do a follow-up question on that? So how do you identify someone with challenged ethics? I mean, sometimes it's obvious, but are there times it's not?
Yeah, sometimes it can be hard. I agree. And I think that one of the strengths that our firm brings is that we, as I said, we've all been local government managers, and it's a pretty small world in city management. There's a couple people in Colorado I can call and ask some discreet questions if, you know, if I have a question about a potential candidate, there's, and we have these, you know, and I never would compromise someone's confidentiality. But because we are very well-connected throughout the country to different organizations and, and people, we do, and everyone in our firm will know all of the finalist candidates, and we communicate and say, you know, this person was, you know, there was a termination here, or there was a harassment lawsuit here. Those things should come up in the media searches, and we ask them to identify those, and then we do the, the other due diligence. But, you know, it's, only goes back seven years. So sometimes you need that informal information that you get from being steeped in the profession for all these years and being, things, and things just sometimes don't look right. If somebody's worked somewhere 20 years and they don't give you any references from that place, that's a red flag to me, and they're working somewhere else now. So then, maybe I know someone who worked in that organization, and I'm going to, I'm going to, if I can, make a discreet inquiry about why would that person not list anyone from there? So I think you just sort of start to see things that don't add up. And, and then, of course, the media searches and other things that, and sometimes people do try to hide that. I mean, I've had candidates come back to me and say, you know, one candidate was angry that we wouldn't move him forward. He had a credit card abuse thing, it was in the Midwest. And I said, he said, well, I paid my debt. I said, well, yeah, but you, you gotta get a different profession. You can't do what you did and continue, at least not through us.
Right.
Good luck, it's not going to be with our firm.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure. Council, why don't we have a little bit more time for some follow-ups to some of these questions, and then we'll, I think we'll have a good 20, 30 minutes for you to ask us some questions.
Sure.
Councilmember Berentine.
I think you went into a little bit of some of the additional stuff you do for background checks. Do you look, if you could go into a little bit more information on exactly what the background checks entail, you said like a media search and that.
Sure.
And if you could explain a little more detail what the Spark Hire is that you brought up?
Sure. The background checks, we, it starts as soon, you know, as I'm going through candidates' resumes, I'm Googling them. You know, just, I just, sometimes things don't, as I said, don't add up on a resume, so I'm going to look and see, they're currently unemployed, I'm going to look and see why. And sometimes that, right then and there, knocks them out of the process. But then, as we, if they survive my initial search, and I don't do as deep of a dive as our recruitment coordinator does, we do a further internet search and also social media. We look at social media that's public and see what's out there. I'm shocked at what some people put out on Twitter who are in local government. And I don't make a judgment about that. It may surprise me, it might not be something I would do, but I will make you aware of it, and you can make the judgment on whether or not you're comfortable with that kind of presence. That's your call. We'll make sure that you're aware of it. And then we do reference calls. We try to talk to a subordinate and a supervisor for each of the candidates that are presented. And then we do, the, the deeper dive is the, we partner with a third-party group, it's, actually, it's Career Builder, who does our background, our due diligence felony misdemeanor check, credit, if it's allowed, whatever the, the laws provide for, educational verification and motor vehicle. So that would be the, the other piece of that. We also ask the candidates themselves to tell us if, we give them the opportunity to let us know if they've been sued, if they've had, you know, what kind, if they've had discipline. It gives them a chance to tell us, we're going to find out, but gives them a chance to explain the situation to us, because you do get sued in local government. And we, you know, I've been sued, I'm sure you all have been. It's just unfortunately part of the territory, but you need to understand what's behind that and, and if it was something that could have been prevented. As far as Spark Hire goes, that is a, it's a process where the candidate would be given two or three questions, and they sit at their computer, and it's a little weird because they, they have to look at themselves, it's a little odd, and it's a recording of their answers to the questions. And then that can be sent to all of you to review. It's not very expensive, but it can give you a little bit of perspective on the candidates and, and how they answers, you know, you might want to say, why do you want to be the Englewood City Manager, or tell us about your, you know, background in economic development, or one or two questions. They have a chance to practice, they have a chance to, you know, they get, they're given so many tries, so it's not, you know, it's not overly stressful. But, but it can provide you with just a different element of looking at the candidates.
And then I just had one more, so I might as well just ask it now. You said you would usually like to have the finalists be five or six. How many do you generally bring forward?
You know, it varies. Yeah, it varies. I will bring as many as I think are qualified and that you might like to see. And it, and sometimes, more often than not, I will have them in tiers, like the tier-one candidates, there might be eight to 10 of those. And I'll put together a matrix for you that has, you know, specific data points, like maybe their years of experience. If there's certain specific things that you all are looking for, I'll have a column on that. And then there might be tier-two candidates. Some clients say we want to know who the rising stars are. You know, they may not be fully qualified, but in some areas, they might not have all the years of experience, but tell us who's coming up. And, and I have done that, and in one case, the rising star got the job, so you just never know. And then, it, so it could be up to 15, as many as that. And you could actually have all of the candidates on the matrix, you just wouldn't, you know, then all the rest of them that applied. And then we would maybe talk or focus on the, the ones in tier-one and tier-two. So that could be 10 or 12.
I mean, just to follow up on that, what would be too few for you to consider it a decent pool to draw from, to get finalists out of?
Well, I would say it's quality and not quantities, but if I didn't have, you know, if I didn't have 10 solid candidates to present to you, you know, I would not feel that, that that was a successful recruitment. I can't imagine that happening, but, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Other councilmembers, further questions? Councilmember Sierra.
I did have a question. You mentioned the database in terms of identifying candidates. Are you able to share some of the attributes that are available within that filtering database?
It's, it's not too complicated, yeah. It's just location, states, and the population.
Okay. So it's not based off of just their strengths or their?
No, nothing like that. It's just somebody who, in California, who manages this database and charges a lot of money for it all year, for us to access it. But it does, it is updated quarterly, so that's why we spend the money to belong to it, because we are sure that we're getting current information, because in this profession, you know, people can move around a bit.
Thank you.
Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. And pardon me if you've touched on this already. You went over the timeline and discussed that there's the finalizing of the position announcement, and then it's released to approximately 12 websites. How long does the position remain up on those websites? Is it just until you've found what you consider to be a satisfactory number, or does it just stay open as you're running through the process?
Well, most websites have like, they'll say 30 days, so that's, you know, you're paying for a 30-day posting. There are some, Indeed is one of them, that scrub, I've learned this from our, our tech person, they all, because it'll scrub websites and keep pushing jobs out there. So you, we could, and I, my philosophy is, we're going to leave it up on our website and open until you have made a decision on a finalist candidate. So, and also, if, if I'm coming to you on Wednesday and on Monday, a terrific candidate applies late, they say, I didn't know anything about it, I'm going to talk to that person and I'm going to bring them to you. I don't have, we don't have a hard and fast deadline. There will be a deadline in their apply-by, but if, but sometimes that happens. And, you know, I want you to have the benefit of the best candidates that come forward. So I will, you know, I might say, you know, I've, I've only had a half-hour conversation with this person, we're still working on it, but I want you to know this person applied, and I'm going to continue to work up their candidacy. Does that cover what you were looking for?
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, so again, they stay up on our website, and, and we get calls sometimes from candidates that say, you know, it said the deadline was October 1st, but it's now December. I said, I know LinkedIn keeps pushing it out, and we can't stop it.
Thank you.
I have a question before I turn it back to Councilmember Sierra. And it picks up a little bit on Mr. Questa's question. Explain a little bit this two-interview process. I, I find that really fascinating, because we didn't do that in the last one, I felt like we needed to have done that. We, although we had done a video, we'd all seen videos first, and that's how we screened. Then we went to, you know, picking our finalists, and then we brought them in.
Right.
And it seemed like we didn't have enough time, although we got a great person, so...
Yeah.
But what, explain a little bit more detailed how that works.
Well, it can work a couple of different ways. Sometimes it's done, and to keep it cost-effective, and if you have a lot of, and you could make this decision when you pick the people to interview, but if you have a lot of people who are out of state, we can do it, you know, like in a three-day period. Like maybe, if you can't interview during the day, you interview three on Monday, three on Tuesday. At the end of Tuesday, you say, all right, we liked these two. And on Wednesday, they come back and meet with you. So that's one way to do it. Sometimes, clients really want a week in between, you know, they really want to digest what they've seen. If it's not, you know, sometimes it's really obvious to everyone who the finalists are. And that's, that's the ideal. And you all know, if you've done hiring, it's, you know it when you see it. So some folks like to do it a week later. And sometimes what, with the second round, more and more what we're seeing is, that's at the point where you get, if you want to do a community panel, and you want to do a department head panel, it's a, you know, that's a great time to do it. So you've narrowed, you've seen six, or seven, or whatever, you narrow it down to two or three. And then, say you're interviewing them on a Thursday night, during the day, maybe they're meeting with the community panel, and they're meeting with the department head panel, and you've got that feedback going into your meeting with them. I just, one of the things that we did in Burleson was the, they wanted to do a reception, you know, after the interview. So they interviewed the candidates, then they went to a reception with just the, it was just the council. But then, they had more informal time with the candidates, the two candidates that were there for the finalists.
And then, do we see the Spark Hire question?
Yes.
Then, earlier on, with all of them, they all do that?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. It can go directly to you.
Your email.
I think all we need is your email.
And then, part of that, how does the confidentiality part work for them? I know that some people, at certain stages, are ready to be known as a candidate, but some can't until, because they could lose their current job. So what's the process that you see with that that is best?
Well, you know, the one thing I didn't do is research your open meetings. I don't know at what point you have to disclose.
We're a pretty strong open meetings group here, so...
Five finalists, when they're...
Yeah, so then, I will work with them on that, and make sure that they're aware of, you know, at what point their name is going to be public, so that it isn't a surprise. And we often will put it right in the position announcement. You know, it's, that's the same way it is in Texas, and we put, we spell it out right in there and say, you know, finalist names will be, you know, you know, are available, you know, for the Open Meetings Act, or something along those lines.
Great. All right. Councilmember Sierra?
You mentioned, or at least within the presentation, you highlighted a lot of similar-sized cities to Inglewood. If you're able to share, in terms of the city manager, city manager position, any qualifications or requirements from those cities that maybe we can use in terms of just identifying?
Sure. It's pretty, from just a baseline piece, and it really does somewhat depend on your preference, but usually, it's, you know, seven to 10 years of increasingly responsible experience. I don't like to require a master's degree. I think that you can, probably 95% of the candidates you interview will have it, maybe all of them will have it. But sometimes, people, for whatever reason, didn't finish it, or didn't start it, and they've got great experience. So I think requiring a bachelor's degree, but being flexible on the master's degree, we should say, you know, highly desired or highly valued, certain number of years' experience. Some clients are very open and want us to go after private sector candidates, find people who have private sector experience in their background. We call that out if that's something that's important to you. And in that case, usually a balance. It is important to have some public sector experience, because that, it can be, it's very different. It's not harder, it's just, it is different, as you mentioned, the strong open meetings act. That's the biggest difference. So making, you know, those key qualifications, a lot of times, it's, you know, approachability in the community, it's collaboration with the council, it's leading, you know, it's the management and leadership style. Those are the things that, you know, are pretty typical in most, I'd say, most communities. In your organization, and I do a lot of work in Austin, Texas, which is just a gigantic organization, but your organization, a manager can get around and get to know people, and really be somebody who engages with the employees. So that's often something as well. You know, someone who is out and about, knows the different departments, isn't, you know, kind of up in their office, not interacting with folks. So that's often what we hear.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. You talked a little bit about the, during the interview process, collecting feedback from the community members. And I think that would probably be important for us. Can you tell us a little bit about kind of other ways that we can, that you've seen it be successful, and other, some ideas about how to collect the feedback? You mentioned comment cards and things like that. I think we had a similar process when we hired our former city manager.
Right. Yeah, there's a few different things in, one of the things that we did in this past year was partner with a company called Polco, P-O-L-C-O, and they do survey work for municipalities. And if you had it, for example, if you have a database of emails from your community, they, we can push out a survey that has information on what they might like to see in a city manager candidate. We can also do it with Survey Monkey. But they will, the one thing that they bring to the table is the ability to compare it to your voter registration polls, so that you're certain that everybody who's participating in the process is, is really a resident of the community. That may or may not be an issue, but it's, that's the one difference to doing a Survey Monkey. But we have done Survey Monkeys for internal organizations, as well as, you know, out into the community. Some, some clients have had stakeholder groups invited them in. For example, when I worked with Janesville, Wisconsin, which is a community of about 60,000, they had, we had a whole day where different groups were invited. Labor was important, they were invited. The healthcare industry was invited. And each group had like an hour. And other units of local government, the business districts. So we went, and then at the end of the day, we had an open meeting that anyone could come to, anyone in the community. Those tend, typically, we don't get a high number of people at those, and that was the case there. We had like eight to 10, but we had all afternoon, people who were invited came and gave their feedback. I think people like to be invited to provide their feedback. And I think you have different organizations and groups that would value, my guess is, they would value that, and would come and, if they could. So we've done it that way, or we've had just everybody in the room together, but they've all received an invitation, and it's open to the public, so anyone else can come. But it gives them a chance to come in and, and give me their feedback and their ideas. So that's, and then at the end, with the, in the interviewing process, we've done it with the, with the comment cards, and candidates make a brief presentation, you know, at the, and sometimes, and we have had, in Kent County, Michigan, we had a pretty extensive interview by the community of the finalist candidates, where people wrote out their questions, and we read the questions and the candidates interviewed. And we did that in Ferguson, Missouri, too. We had, you know, a public forum where there were candidate questions asked, and then at the end, the candidates all come back out and can kind of mingle with the folks who are there. So that has worked really well, too.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. Please. So you talked about poll call as a contractor, assisting with the surveys that you may administer.
Right.
I was curious, in terms of the comments you made about involving citizen groups, a citizen panel, or more than one, of course, how your firm has, beyond poll call, maybe, how your firm has worked to analyze and share the results and the insights from the data you've taken in? Do you do that directly? Something I care more about than probably most people on the earth, but how do you analyze that data, and who's doing it, and what's your level of expertise? Are you contracting that out, or do you do that?
We don't contract it out, but we do have people in our firm who...
You do?
Yeah, we have two full-time employees who are very skilled at Survey Monkey and can pull that data together pretty quickly.
So it's always survey-based?
Well, no, no, not necessarily. If it's, if it's more just informationally based, then...
Comment cards?
Yeah. Then that's me looking at each one, and maybe transcribing each one for a list, so you all can see what the comments were. We did that in, in fact, in Cambridge, Massachusetts, we did the city manager recruitment, and we had 150 people at the forum, and they filled out long, I think most of them were professors, and both sides were filled. And so, we transcribed all of that for the council to have as feedback.
Gave raw data back?
Raw data back to the council.
Sort of natural language processing, or just...
We, that's what they wanted. They wanted the raw data.
Okay.
That's how they wanted it, and so that's what we did. It took about eight hours to, you know, really go through everything, but, you know, we did it and provided that back to them.
Okay.
And we've done that, and I did that in Oberlin, Ohio, too. They also had...
Conservator?
Pardon?
Conservator?
No, we did, well, we did it at the college. We used the, yeah, we were, I was there for the city, but the college, obviously, is a huge influence. So we did the same thing, where we had the comment cards, and about 100 people came, and for, you know, a community that, about 8,000 people, that was a pretty good turnout. And then, got the comment cards, and went through all of them, and transcribed them, and gave that back. So that's what they have wanted, especially from the comment cards. I think people do like to see the actual words. And then, the survey data's a little different.
Right. I want to make sure we get to give you the last 20 minutes to ask us questions and further comments.
Oh, gosh, I'm not used to getting...
Yeah. Well, I mean, I have more questions if you want to ask.
Yeah, go ahead, really.
Well, I do, I do have one of, what can we do best? When city councils are at their best doing this, what are they doing?
I think, you know, I think obviously wanting, what candidates look for in, in a, I always say, city managers run toward challenges. You know, I mentioned Janesville. When I was working with them, the GM plant closed, 3,000 jobs gone. The river rose and flooded the downtown. I didn't lose a single candidate. Everyone was, they were up for the challenge. But what they get nervous about is if there's, you know, difficult divisiveness at the council level, they get nervous. That's what candidates are nervous about. And so, you know, and everybody knows that, you know, that in government, we don't all agree. You know, we have differences of opinion, and that's, that's not what I mean. So I think just, you know, being positive about the city, and positive about the organization, and, you know, public comments and things like that always helps, because whoever is interested is going to, they're gonna watch meetings, and they're gonna do their own due diligence. And that, I think, is very important. As far as making the process move slowly, or smoothly, not slowly, smoothly, we'll all put together a calendar and do our best to adhere to it, so that, you know, we get down to the interview dates. Hopefully, everybody's marked that, you know, three months in advance, and we know, you know, that everybody can be there. Because that's really important, that we're all, you know, in the room together at that point in time. And that you're all honest with me about what you want. That's very important. And we'll talk privately and individually, and I really need to know what you're looking for, what challenges you've had, what challenges you see in the future, you know, warts and all. I need to hear it. You know, it's, you know, might not all appear in the marketing brochure, but I have it in the back of my mind as I'm evaluating candidates and their abilities.
Councilmember Berentine, you have one more, then we'll...
Then we will let you out.
Sure.
Go ahead.
As you had an opportunity to present and make a decision to present for this, who all, who all did you have an opportunity to reach out to or have contact with? And then, who do you have contact with normally, besides council, as kind of a point of information? Who do you normally use?
Oh, I haven't talked with anyone here, other than...
Oh, but I meant like, who does your, like, so when you got the information, how do you get that? And how did you make your decision to pick us? Because you said that you just had...
Oh, to propose on the...
Aside from the size of the community?
You know, I don't think, we're in the local government business, and so we, we pretty much respond to almost all proposals that we receive. And I think, I personally chose this one because of the, as I said, the size, but I really hadn't had any conversation with anyone here.
Then maybe you can, how do you normally receive them, then? How do you find out about it?
About communities?
Like a, the proposal, you said, do you receive it?
Oh, oh, how do we receive it? There's all kinds of bidding, one's bid net, and there's all kinds of, we sign up for different state bidding processes, and local governments post on that. I'm not sure if that's how this one came through to us, but it's, it's very possible. Yeah.
And then, do you usually use some point-of-contact person?
Ideally, it would be great if I could have somebody within the city to talk with, just to get, you know, we have to reserve rooms and get materials disseminated to the council, and just kind of the logistical things that, you know, if you can identify someone, whether it's the interim manager, or it's an admin person, just someone that can help us get pictures of the community, and get a current org chart, and just some of the things needed for the brochure. That's very helpful.
And you fit that into your timeline? I mean, that would be...
Oh, right, yeah. And I would, and I would be talking with folks when I'm back here. You know, who can I get pictures from? Sometimes, it's the economic development person, or there's a communications person, and that would be, you know, one of the things that I would work on when I came back.
Thanks. What, what do you want to know from us?
Oh, gosh. Well, I guess, you know, any, in general, you know, tell me a little bit about why you, why you all are elected officials, and what you like about Inglewood. What's, what's appealing to you about the community?
Maybe we should start with the person who's most recently put on?
No, that's, you're probably the most, it's precious in your mind.
Anyone who wants to start. Light your light. Anyone who wants to start is fine.
So you're gonna make me start, aren't you? So, yeah, so I was recently elected in May, so about...
I did see that.
Six or seven, eight months, somewhere around there. So I ran, I just want to get more involved with the community. I've always been kind of knowledgeable about what's going on, but just haven't really done much. Started getting more involved about two years ago or so, just around, things around locally. And I have a young son, six. So just finding a better place, or how to make the city a better place, for me, was a big, big selling point. So just love Inglewood, love the proximity to Denver, love the proximity to just about everywhere. You know, we got Santa Fe, we got Hampton, or major US highways that take you into the mountains, take you into the city, or take you down into, you know, the suburbs, where, you know, we got Chapel Hill State Park and that type of thing. So just really love the location, and, you know, just with a six-year-old, you gotta find things to do.
Right.
Keep them busy, and that type of thing. So I just, I think it's a great place to raise a family, and just, yeah, there's a lot of potential in the city, so I definitely enjoy it.
And that came through in your survey. A lot of people talked about a great place to live, and proximity, and... Councilmember Wink?
Thanks. So we live in Colorado. A lot of people love living in Colorado, that's why we live here. And within just how amazing Colorado is, Inglewood is a little nook of beauty. You're gonna find the similar answer to what Mr. Sierra just said, if you ask many individuals who work for the city administration, us on council, just citizens. It's just a special place, just outside Denver, close to everything, really, you need, and just a special, close space that feels like home to a lot of individuals, whether you're from Colorado or not. And so, I love that. I've been here maybe 13, 14 years now. And I, yeah, I previously was on the Cultural Arts Commission with Member Martinez as liaison and as chair of that group for a while. And as was the case of Member Martinez, she moved on to city council after, well, she still the liaison, but after being on that particular board slash commission, and I did the same. But I, it's a wonderful commission, and it was a great way to get more involved in in the community and understand more about how things work pertaining to cultural arts, whether it's meeting with Public Works and the Traffic Department about our cultural crosswalks, and what can we do, what can we not do, and why, and just learning all the ins and outs, and it made me more interested in coming and presenting to council about what we're doing for the year. All of that was really fun, and I felt that I had a different set of skills that could complement really well what was here, and what was needed to maybe think outside the box or think differently about things, and make, you know, make our city more thoughtful, make it, give it another opportunity. I thought, it's my duty to give more, to give something, to do more, because I love this place.
That's clear.
I'm not going anywhere, so, yeah. Thanks.
I was elected, not this last November 18, but in '17, along with Cheryl, her and I both came in in the same class. I was essentially born and raised in Inglewood. Went out to school and then spent a little bit of time at Post College in Denver, and now my wife and I raise our two children here in Inglewood. Beyond the immeasurable, tangible things that the folks have mentioned here, and that's just our location, the wonderful parks, it really is, just has that, that close-knit feel. For me, it is that, that intangible that I just described, which is the sense of community. I do think that there's a tremendous care for each other and neighbor, a neighborly appeal, really for everybody, I think, that lives here, and I think that that's one of the things that draw people here, even sometimes as opposed to Denver, which is certainly maybe not comparable to an Austin or Dallas, Fort Worth, some of those really, those larger cities. I think Denver's getting that feel, which is drawing people more out.
Looks like it.
Sure, you bet. And so that's what I'd say it is for me, that, that community and the, the opportunity to serve it, and all those things that the neighbors love about the community, and keeping those intact, and, and finding ways that we can improve the city as well. So that's what brought me the good fortune of representing my neighbors here in District Four. Thank you.
Other questions? Or do you want to hear from all of us?
No, I'm just curious. It's just, but it, those are the, yeah, that's wonderful. And in a community this size, you really can get your hands around it and, and get to know people and have that sort of small-town feel. So just, you know, I, you know, any particular challenges that you all see on your horizon? You know, I know you've had some land use discussions. I watched your, your January meeting, and land use is always, and, and as far as, are you built out? It's pretty much, yeah. So, and that was the community that I managed. We were built out, so everything was redevelopment and, and, and that's challenging.
For the most part, yeah. Councilmember Berentyniask, you want to kick it off?
I think as a first-tier suburb, Inglewood is really feeling the pressure of Denver and the encroachment of that urbanism, the density, and they don't want to be urbanized. We have a community that's been very independent and fought very hard to make sure that they had their own identity, that independence, and that's been difficult. There has been some in their history, two votes before to be annexed by Denver. There's a reason for Denver to want us. I mean, we have water rights and, and Colorado water is gold. So we have the wastewater treatment plant. We're largely sustainable, except for that we just give our fire department to Denver. So people are feeling that encroachment of maybe losing some of that independence, of kind of becoming a little bit of Denver South, instead of maintaining that suburban, smaller-town feel to it. And I think that that's a battle right now. You've just had a huge housing push here, as you've had in a lot of areas of the country, but, but pretty severely felt for the South suburb, you know, coming straight out of Denver, and it's, it's been very difficult. So that's some of the challenge we'll have to face as we're trying to maintain that...
Sure.
That individual, community, suburban feel, and yet still be Denver right down the street.
Yeah. Yeah, I can see that. Well, I don't have any other questions. I will have lots more if you invite me back, and I would love the opportunity to work with all of you. I know what an important position it is, and as I said, I take it very seriously, so hope to hear good things from you. Do you know when you're going to be making a decision?
Yes. Well, Thursday night is when we're interviewing other firms.
Oh, that's right. I did know that, yeah.
And we will be trying to figure out, because we've had this little snafu with tonight's agenda, try to figure out where we will talk about which of the firms is the best. And then it'll take some time to negotiate with whoever we have decided. But February 4th, I think, is our regular meeting where the final decision will be.
Okay, great.
Approved at that setting.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for your time. I truly appreciate it and hope to have the opportunity to work with all of you. If you have any questions at all, you know, you've got my information, so don't hesitate to let me know if I can clarify anything.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Great presentation, very, very helpful information.
Thank you.
Have a great trip back.
Thank you.
All right.